Roll call for the open workshop. Special meeting July 6, 2017. It is 6:34. I'll take a roll call. Trustee Cruden is absent. Trustee Desmond?
Here.
Trustee Finnerty?
Here.
Trustee Gerlach?
Here.
Trustee LaWanda?
Here.
Trustee Mongeau?
Here.
Trustee Ryan?
Here.
Vice President Rudback?
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'll start with the consent agenda. I'll let you know what resolutions. They're in a different order than the packet I sent home. As the packet started to grow, I broke it up into a consent and a non-consent. So I will go over.
You sent it back to me?
I'm sorry, there was an email that we sent home because everything was being done so late into late afternoon yesterday. There was no way to get a messenger, so I sent everything with an email. So we'll start with communications. We have one, which is a reservation. Two, early childhood program. You'll see a salary being assigned to preschool educational funds. Do I have a motion in a second? Who'd like to volunteer tonight? Mr. Gerlach will move, and Trustee Desmond can second. Number two.
Just, um, this?
That's on non-consent.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I've got it broken out, so if I didn't correct me, but as we're going along, if you see a conflict. Okay, three, personnel to curriculum writing. Sorry if it's, uh...
Once again, guys, this is just names anyone who applies.
I thought I went through.
It's not actually used. I don't want to make you nervous, Mike.
It's as needed.
President Broderick has a question. Who keeps track of who does what and when?
I'm hoping Dr. Degen. Is that right?
Yes. I'm in charge of the curriculum writing. He goes through my office.
So it's a sign-out, sign-in kind of thing?
Time sheets.
Time sheets?
Ultimately, the directors work with their staff to get an allocation. They work on pacing guides, assessments, curriculum document, protocols come in, they see they have to make adjustments, and then they work with their teams, whether it's a grade level, whether it's high school, and then what they do is the time sheets.
Okay, thank you.
What about resolution number two?
So...
That's mandated.
The master teachers are funded by the New Jersey State preschool program to provide and maintain high levels of quality by helping support preschool teachers. So this has to be provided by the preschool education level.
Okay, and how was this person picked? Is that what I'm trying to understand?
This person has done it for the last three years, has experience, has been down in Trenton, has worked with the officials down in Trenton, and just the salary is based on step as teacher. With masters.
Well, that's it. I think that's the defining factor is that the teacher has a master's degree. And that's one of the reasons why they're considered to be a master teacher. You can combine that with the education that that teacher has.
We're also excited, this teacher also is a reading specialist in addition to having a master's degree.
Okay.
Thank you.
Resolution four is a monthly resolution, Cesarius positions. You'll see food service worker and a substitute teacher aide.
Go back to MJ.
Five is on community education. You'll see there's one name.
Are we to understand that this person is added to the list of administrative in charge that we did as a resolution last, at the last meeting?
Yes, Trustee. At the last meeting, we did the entire list. This candidate just received his principal cert, which is to be an administrative in charge, so we add him into the list.
Okay, thank you.
Resolution six, I'll give you a chance to take a look at, coaches and advisors.
Okay, I have a question on this one. The, we, I remember a month or so ago, we've discussed that the physical education department was going to take a cut, I believe. Is that still in effect?
Yeah, through Director Jacobson, we've mandated that there be a 25 percent reduction in all expenditures through, not physical ed, but through athletics. Whether he does that through equipment, or staffing, or a combination of both, we would still run full programs.
But most of these positions were volunteer, the assistant coaches, and now they're not volunteer anymore.
There's only two volunteers in...
No, I believe football always had, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Copaz, they always had that number of, uh, of, uh, of, yes, the numbers that they have to deal with.
Yeah, so the amount of slots or positions for each sport would be the same, especially with football being a safety issue, making sure that we have enough coaches to supervise and keep our players safe. You would see most of our volunteers in the spring season. Remember, baseball had probably the most volunteer coaches, and this would only be for a full season.
There was some discussion, Mr. Copaz, about the elimination possibly for budget reasons of freshman, freshman teams. Did that occur? Are we maintaining freshman teams?
We are maintaining freshman teams.
Okay, thank you.
Resolution seven, Bayonne alternative high school.
On resolution six, I have a question that cannot be asked.
Then we'll go inside. When we go?
Mr. Rudback? I have a question about number six. So, boys and girls soccer, they have two assistant coaches, correct? And girls volleyball, as well as cheerleading, were they always two assistant coaches?
Right, uh, three assistant coaches, two, two volunteer.
Well, for the boys and girls soccer, just how many kids, like, two assistants?
Yeah, I believe the slots have remained the same, so we would have two from last year, but I will double check that information and get that to you, Trustee.
All right, thank you.
And then also tennis has one assistant coach. I played tennis for them in high school, we never had an assistant coach, so I don't understand why we have an assistant coach for tennis.
An assistant has been with us, you know, they do a great job. She was an assistant coach last year, and I agree with you. Depends on sports and the amount, members of the team. Obviously, football, you have freshmen, and then you have varsity, and that's probably our largest group of, you know, players. You know, of course, as I said before, for safety reasons, football would have them all.
Okay, resolution number eight, monthly resolution. We've been doing lately acceptance and appropriation transfer to line item accounts, and you'll see the resolution, and you'll see a series of backup sheets.
Anybody? Any of your balance questions?
And then, uh...
What? Hold on. No, I just said that.
Okay, so I just want to revisit number six, because I just, I gotta, I gotta say, it's really...
I'd rather do it now than do it up on stage. Let's go back to number six.
Okay, so, Dr. Winkler, with your permission, I'd just like to say, can I, can I request what cuts were made by Director Jacobson to the athletic budget? Because, you know what, I have to tell you, we cut academic programs, you know? We cut academics, and from what I see, from, I don't see, you know, athletics being cut at all, and I just don't understand. I understand they go hand in hand, and I have nothing against athletics, but if we're making cuts across the board, and we made some very tough choices with academic programs that unfortunately we had to eliminate, I want to know what cuts were made to athletics. I don't want to cut the freshman program, nothing like that, but...
President Broderick just asked that, and I think the...
We did cut their overall supply line budgets down from what they were last year, down to 35 percent of the total, and Mr. Jacobson has been directed to look for savings in any type of supplies, any type of equipment. We are right now going with a five-year rotation on most of our uniforms, where in the past it was a four-year rotation. So we are doing that, but I will get a list of what has been done, and the year just started, July 1, but I'm sure he's got some purchase orders in the pipeline for the fall sports, which will come into effect very shortly.
Thank you.
So can table number six, and then...
Well, that's, that's up to Dr. Winkler. I mean, I don't think so, no.
We're tabling number six? No, we have to talk inside. For sure.
Okay, yeah, no, okay.
But we don't, I'm sorry.
Dr. Winkler's gonna review what cuts were made, but we're not gonna table number six, because you want to table number six?
Well, the problem I see is that... Excuse me? What I see is one of these, most of these sports start now. You know, they don't start in September, they start pretty much now, and that's my only concern is to, some might have started already, as far as what we do with this, so. There's been no additional coaches, I'm assuming, positions put on this. I'd hope not, correct? Anybody?
Well, I think some of them...
One of the volunteers.
But some of them went from volunteer to pay, I think.
They went from volunteer? Did anyone go from volunteer to being paid, other than that? And it might have been, if that position opened up, and I'm saying this, the number of positions being paid are the exact same number that we had last year.
Yeah, so probably every year that we do have some volunteers, when a position does open up, whether someone goes out on leave, or goes to a different district, if that volunteer has a substitute cert, or is a certified teacher in that district, they eligible for that spot. And if, you know, they apply, and the head coach approves that, and athletic director approves that, they could turn it to a pay code.
So I don't know if we're, probably not...
No.
Probably already questioned.
Just for, for inside.
Okay.
Number nine is approval of solicits bids. As the board's been aware, especially Finance Committee, we've had a parcel of property that we're looking to get rid of, and we've gotten permission, and this is the resolution in place, giving us permission to go out, set, and we'll go out, oh, I'm sorry. Well, I'm gonna turn...
The resolution is part of the overall process. We have county approval from the new county superintendent, Mr. Zara. If you're familiar with the Ninth Street property, it's a vacant piece of lot that can only be entered through a municipally, municipal parking lot. It is landlocked, for, for most part, we cannot access it without going through the parking lot on Ninth Street. Mr. Zara, the superintendent of the county, has signed off on us. This is the next step, where we would get a resolution and send it down to the state. The state would then say, yes, you can sell it, no, you can't sell it, we'll need a statement from the superintendent to accompany this resolution down to the state, that the property holds no educational value for the district, but it does have a monetary value. At that point, the board can decide whether to go out to competitive bid on that piece of property. This in no way allows us to start the process of selling it. It's part, so we have that, so to speak, in our tool belt if we do want to sell it.
So then possibly you should, the league approves the sale to the highest bidder, if it's preparation.
The, the, the...
Why the resolution's written and in its proper form is actually just to clarify. The resolution gets passed, it gets sent to the state Department of Education, if it's approved, then the superintendent then has the authority to put it out to bid, public bid notice, at which time you collect the bids, and the board then will have another opportunity to decide whether they want to go forward with it.
Can we vote on it, instead of actually putting an end with resolutions?
Put it on non-consent?
Yeah, non-consent.
I can move it to non-consent.
Yeah, please.
Mr. Sprecher, somehow in my memory, or Mr. Smith, in my memory, was this parcel of land already on some piece of board of education agenda with regard, yes, it was?
Yeah, we spoke about this previously.
I thought we spoke about this previously. Could you just review for me what the previous discussion was?
Previous discussion was to have the ability to send it to the county superintendent. That's the first step in the process. So the board, the board discussed in finance that if we wanted to sell this property, we just couldn't advertise with a local realtor and say, parcel of land for sale. There are different protocols, correct, Mitch?
Yeah.
That we need to go through in order to sell, because I think, and I'm not a lawyer, by law, we, the state owns the property, we don't own the property. The state will give us the opportunity to sell it, but we need to go through these steps, and this is part of the steps in order to be able, if the board wants to, to sell it.
And with respect to the last discussion, if I may, I think the point was, because we need to get various levels of approval, the board wanted to start the ball rolling, and at any time, the board can pull the plug on it. I mean, that was the, you know, in case, in the event that they want to do this or don't want to do this, at least you put your ducks in a row.
And Ava's right, it's come up several times, because we went out to find out, to praise the value of it, and then the second step announced.
We did have the appraisals on it, we had a survey done on it, and we did, when we did that, somehow, a member of the community sent us a letter offering to buy it outright, and we couldn't go that route. We had, we had to go through all the competitive bidding process.
That's what I was referencing. I was referencing that letter, and I thought the letter just kind of initiated the sale, but that's like way in the bottom of the rung on how far we have to go. All right, thank you.
It did set the minimum price, that's what the board, $110,000.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that would be the consent, I'm gonna leave those two signatures on there when we move. So that was the consent agenda. I'll move number nine to non-consent. I have one other resolution that we could do outside, that would be number 11, which is the personnel to the summer park. I put it on non-consent because there was a conflict for a board member. Normally, this would be on consent. Any questions? If not, a move in a second.
I'm sorry.
How about we do the questions first?
We have a resignation, is that person still?
Because this is summer work, my understanding.
Is that person still going to be on the...
Yeah.
So the person will maintain the position in the summer program, but as of September 1, that person is no longer on staff, nor is an employee of the district.
This is for, oh, there you go. This is for the summer park assessment, so the person resigned, but they're still working in credit recovery.
All right.
And this is as needed, may not have to work as part of park, depending on how many students participate, who can go to any of these candidates.
Do we have any other science teachers that would be willing to take the position?
Looking at this, there's two other ones that are on there.
Okay.
Science teachers, so, and again, it's a math test, so we would go to, obviously, the math teachers first.
Okay.
Now, that was going to be my second question. Does one have to have certification in the area that's being tested in order to administer the test?
No.
Okay.
Just certified.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so resolution 11, who'd like to move in second? Moved by Trust, and I'll go over all the moves in seconds. Trustee Desmond. And who'd like to second?
My second.
And at this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Dr. Wonko.
Welcome, Dr. Winkler. Did a good job so far.
And perhaps I should not speak?
Yeah. Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Dr. Mater and President Broderick. As most of you know, I've been working pro bono for the past three months, and in fact, I've worked with our Director of Guidance to redo the master schedule about three times up to this point. Also been working on Systems 3000 with our outside consultant, as well as Matt Bolden, and looking at budget items and where we can perhaps save some money. Additionally, I met with small groups and individuals, custodians, shop personnel, individually with each principal and each director. I used formatted questions to ensure fidelity in the process. However, I allowed ample time for open-ended questions, reflections, and expressions of what is beneficial to the district and where we need to improve. And I have those sample questions for any of the board members, you would like to see those when we go into session. The past week, I met with Central Office regarding the G3s course tallies for the high school, and I additionally took a tour of the high school because I have not been here in quite some time. I then updated my 100-day plan, which I submitted to the interview committee, I guess about three, four months ago, and I explained to them at that time that I needed to first meet with the stakeholders, take a tour, and look at the budget before we could finalize that plan. That plan has now been finalized, which I will share with the board this evening as All principals were in full support of my concept of decentralization. What this basically means is, the school, elementary school is the hub of that area of the city. The book Global Connect, for example, the principal is the one who will be doing Global Connect now, that we have a play in our school, or that we have an event coming up. That's the person that everyone who lives in that neighborhood should be looking to as the leader of the neighborhood. In addition, the close relationship that will be built with the families will be served very well by, again, decentralizing everything that has been done. I'll also be requiring a monthly message on the website by every principal and every director. That includes me as well. And those will be updated each month so that we can keep in that contact. I will also be putting up what's called an electronic backpack, an electronic briefcase. The backpack is simply a device where a parent can click on and see any notices that were sent home from that particular school, grade three, what supplies lists are needed, so every teacher would be responsible to have that in the backpack, and it will be the principal's responsibility to check that that is up to date. The briefcase, the electronic briefcase, is more for the staff. In there will be memos that might come out from one of the assistant supers, myself, board president, whatever it might be, and those, again, will be archived in that electronic briefcase so that any one of the staff members can get to that at any time. Directors will also be decentralized. You know, we have a excellent academy program here. The directors would like to have back the ability to decide who is in freshman honors, for example. Right now, you need to be in the academy to be in a freshman honors course. So the chair of the mathematics department, for example, is not the person who would do the screening to see who goes into honors math. You would have to be in the academy. We want to open this up so it's available to all students in the school. Doesn't mean they're all going to get in, they still have to pass a rigorous review process, but that will be decentralized now. It will be done by the department chair, who has an expert in each of those areas. Freshmen will be able to enroll in, maybe they just want English honors, maybe they're not good in mathematics, maybe they just want to take mathematics so they can go into honors of mathematics. 100-day plan is the next thing I have, and I'd like to just pass that out and go over it with you, and answer any questions you might have. And I'm not going to read this to you, I'm just going to kind of give you a summation of each paragraph, and then you could ask me any questions that you have on it. But basically, I start off by saying I have a little bit of a jumpstart, because I'm known in Bayonne, I've lived in Bayonne all my life, I've been educated in the Bayonne public school system, so I'm not an outsider coming in that people have to gain the trust of. Luckily, I had experience as an interim super in another district, so that gives me the skill set needed also for this demanding job. So, as you know, I'm responsible for administering the policies that will be adopted by the board. In other words, I'm the one who is supposed to run the school system day to day and be accountable to the board regarding how well it is run. The bottom line is, I'm the educational leader for the community. As you've probably heard me say before, all my decisions are based on three things. Is it good for the students? What's the effect on the staff? And how does it impact the budget? And it's normally in that exact tier that I do it. However, due to our budget concerns, that has kind of moved up the ladder, and I look at that quite closely. But students will always be the focus whenever I make a decision. Now, to be successful in providing the best educational opportunities to the students entrusted in our care, we need to admit that there are areas that need improvement. I will take ownership of the problems, and I expect to move forward quickly. Too many of our parents are opting out of public education. I'm committed to restoring confidence in public education. I'm not speaking about Bayonne specifically, I'm talking about people in general, and our educational system in general. So the following areas, where we'll really concentrate for the next 100 days. The first is conducting an external review of the budget, including but not limited to the year-end fund balance, project review of appropriation lines, open encumbrances, projections to complete the year's salary and wages, revenue lines, and other items. And then upon review, we will develop the 17, 18 budget scenarios, and as you, the Finance Committee was able to meet with the expert that I have brought in to help us with this process, Mr. DeLucia, and I believe he's...
He's in there about a month.
Perhaps he would like to come up and share a few words about taking a temperature for the district budget-wise. And Mr. DeLucia has a firm that does this type of work, and he already gave us one suggestion in our committee meeting, which I think we might be acting on. Mr. DeLucia?
Thanks, Dr. Winkler, Board of Education. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to go over some of those high-level things. I have over 20 years' experience working in school districts, and I worked for Ernst Young, the accounting firm, for seven years prior to that. So I bring a vast knowledge of varying, varying operational procedures to look at. Dr. Winkler and I spoke, we're looking at a lot, a lot of high-level things, all the way down to lower-level things that you might not consider, to get a holistic approach to your budget, so you have enough financial resources to support your academic programs in the district. I'll probably be in district at least one day a week, or two days a week, with Dr. Wonko and your staff. We'll always be available, so wherever you need, you feel free to stop by and see us. And I look forward to working with you guys and helping you out, and getting you back on track where you need to be.
Does anyone have any questions for this resolution?
How are we doing so far?
So far, we're doing a little better. I mean, we all saw some of that good news coming out of Trenton, hopefully we'll get some more of that New Jersey A number, you know, backing down, which is very positive for Bayonne, and it's for a lot of school districts. So that was a very good note to see. We started doing some review of the closeout for the prior school year, we just sort of touched that. Some things looked a little bit more positive now than they actually looked two months ago, which is a very good thing to see the direction we're kind of going. Sometimes, next week and the following week thereafter, we're gonna nail everything down with the business office staff, to look at how that year closes down, where things are actually gonna end up, what your potential surplus is gonna look like before your auditors come out, so we'll have that for the, for the Board of Education to look at, and then how that goes forward for staff. for staffing for the new school year. I'm sure you're all very anxious, as most people in the community, to look at that. So we're going to focus on that very quick. But a little bit more positive than it was a few months ago, so that's a very good thing.
I'm going to put you on the spot. And in the hallway, I had commented on how much we appreciate Matt, and Brian had a lot of good things to say himself about, so we're looking forward to good things with both of you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
One item I'm going to throw out, which you did not mention, that the Finance Committee, one of the things we'll be looking at is a zero-based budget procedure for our administration. So do you want to touch on that for one second, or did I put you on the spot?
No, no, it's not a problem at all. Actually, we've done that before working together, Dr. Wanko and I. It's very easy to say, let's build a zero-based budget. We all kind of live it there. But the reality is, just like we have all our homes, we have all our budgets, you know, if you don't have the money, you can't repair the roof. So we're going to look at everything from the ground up and to really make sure even that purchasing procedures are proper, we're getting the right prices, we're capitalizing on some of the smaller items. And it's been my experience at a larger district like yourselves, once we change sort of that culture of things, it moves up through the big ramp very, very quick. And really ensuring that we are only purchasing what we really need. And I know that might sound weird to the Board of Education. In doing this for almost 20 years and auditing, we used to take inventories at year-end, and we would go into elementary schools, and you always have that old storage closet. And sometimes you'd open the door, and you would see hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of cases of colored paper that was yellow and old and brittle. And then you'd look at their purchasing coming for the school year, and the main office would order another 50 cases of blue, 50 cases of yellow, 50 cases of green, because we've always done that for the last 10 years. So it's really kind of instilling, looking into everything and all the processes, really to make sure that it's proper and build up on that. And hopefully, we could capitalize on some other needs that might have been overlooked by shifting those resources back and forth to give you the best educational environment for your students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. In addition to Mr. DeLucia, I would also like to conduct an external review of the curriculum. I've spoken to Dr. Deggan, and he is on board with another consultant that I would like to bring in. We'll be looking at things like digits, Go Math. These are all Common Core-ready programs, and their online support and activities. In language arts, we'll be looking at Columbia University's Lucy Chaykin's Readers and Writings Workshop, her series of units of study curriculum for those workshops. I also asked Dr. Deggan if he would look at eDoctrine and see if he thought that would be a good match for our district, because it's a very powerful tool of using data to help shape your curriculum and the delivery of instruction and improve teaching and learning. And I think he's done some research on that in the past few days, and would like to give us an update?
Yes, and I'd like to thank Dr. Wanko for pointing this out to me, so I did do some research. And what eDoctrine really is, is a system that was made for teachers by teachers. And what it is, is a full-edged learning management system that makes implementing education best practices breeze. Currently, we have our real-time student information system for our observations. We also have On Course for our lesson plans and teacher websites. When you move to the edoctrine, what I see is, it's really an education software with this one-stop shopping. It would help us prioritize state standards. It'll help us create curriculum maps and standard-based lesson plans. It'll help us build paper-based and online assessments, print answer sheets, scan assessments, quickly pinpoint students who are falling behind, what standards they're having trouble with, and help us manage our SGOs and track students' goals, for example, response intervention and IEDPs. And how does it do it? It saves time, because teachers now have the opportunity to work collaboratively on their planning and assessments. It saves time by quickly grading assessments with data-generated reports, that we can use our own printers that are already in-house to make our bubble sheets and help with our scoring. And it saves money by replacing two or three assisting platforms with one. Just looking at it in the area of curriculum, and out of my office, we do curriculum, we do assessment, and we do instruction, just in the area of curriculum, it's going to help with those curriculum writers, because it gives us a portal right there where we can use the standards. It will help with lesson planning for our teachers. This is a key thing that it has, is the heart of edoctrine is our assessment and data reporting, because there's a test bank, and you know, with the teachers, they're always looking for those PARC-like questions. There's over 200,000 questions available on various question banks, so we like that opportunity. Also, you can build the bubble sheets. You can do online assessments like PARC, but it does give you data reporting that you compare to individual student class, grade level, school level, and sometimes even regional levels. And then the final piece that I like also, out of my office, we've worked on Achieve New Jersey, which we've done through real-time. They have something called e-Observe, which helps with not just the observation component, but it also incorporates the student growth objectives. And then finally, there's a suite in edoctrine that helps with professional learning. So if you're looking at curriculum management, or we're talking about assessment building, the teachers can go in, again, one-stop shopping and get all of it. So it's a curriculum, it's assessment, it's observation, it's SGO, and it's collaborative. And that's the important part. It tears down the walls between teachers. So we will continue to work with edoctrine, and we'll get some people in, and we'll see where it goes.
Dr. Deggan, with regard to that edoctrine.
Yes.
That was one of the biggest challenges when I was a former teacher, was trying to model questions based upon the PARC model. So just taking a look at this, we just hired a number of teachers to be involved in the writing of curriculum. It's my hope that they be using edoctrine as their basis for writing that curriculum. Secondly, and more practically, how much is going to cost?
I don't have the price yet, but I'm not sure. There's probably different levels that you could purchase. But what I see for 2,000, for 1,000 students, probably about $2, $2-plus dollars a student. So we're looking $20,000. But I don't know what level of what we get with that, so it's really an intensive exploration that I did.
We have a curriculum committee, that's my point. The curriculum committee can access edoctrine and make their job more efficient and plus more on the, that was the challenge, of trying to make up questions that are PARC modeled. It's very, very difficult to do.
It may not even have to come together. Wouldn't it be like we have to meet here at a central location? What we can do is work through edoctrine to make those assessments and then share them district-wide. Because again, for SGOs, we always want district assessments, one, two, three, four. But for that individual teacher that's looking for that quiz or that formative assessment, you can pull it. And there is an opportunity to go online as a student where they can use the drag-and-drop features and multiple answer choices, not just a, not just true and false.
And I'm sure the questions also have attached to the Common Core curriculum standard.
Oh, yeah. New Jersey State's student learning standard.
Is already connected with it. Thank you.
This is a very powerful program, because it also allows you not only to look at your own students, but you could look at, let's say, fifth grade, the other fifth grade in the city, all the fifth grades in New Jersey, and then all the fifth grades in the country. So it's really going to quickly pinpoint students' needs and standards for us. So we're, it's.
Are we going to continue to write curriculum to PARC and then teach to PARC? Is this still the?
I mean, the goal is really to write the curriculum based on New Jersey's student learning standards and not towards the test. These questions help with that format that's an online. It doesn't seem like we're moving away from that next-generation test, whether you call it PARC. It's going to still have that critical thinking that you need. So we want to write our curriculum.
That's what we're trying to do, is have our kids, I don't want to use the word kids, but our students become critical thinkers. And with the PARC, I know there's a big thing about teaching to the test, but it's more about teaching the students to think critically based on the facts.
I understand that, but my personal concern still has been that it wasn't teachers helping teachers, it wasn't teachers preparing the test, it was Pearson. And, you know, are we still swallowing that?
That's a higher level with that. That PARC requires a higher level, and either way, whether it's Pearson making money.
I would like to know that our teachers still can be collaborative and have some kind of, I don't know, autonomy over their classrooms and their.
If I could make an analogy, perhaps I will answer your question. The core standards, if you look at it as though you were a track coach and you were training people to run a marathon, and the time you want to hit is 25 minutes and 10 seconds, that's your goal. That's what you want to hit. So that's what your standards are. The standards are here. The coach gets to coach any way they want to coach to reach that end. So think of it that way, that the teacher is the coach and the student is learner. And that's one of the 10 principles of the Coalition of Essential Schools. Teacher is coach, student is learner. So you develop your own curriculum, you're in control, you decide what you want to make sure they can win that marathon.
That does answer it, because I think some of the magic that happens in a classroom between teacher and student is sometimes just the opportunity that presents itself, and they run with it. I just don't like seeing teachers robbed of.
Like the teacher the most.
Yeah.
But that doesn't happen often, though. It doesn't. There are a number of projects that one can do in addition to addressing the Common Core and the PARC-related questions, projects where students can use their imagination. But in the end, you are teaching them to become critical thinkers, and they can use their personal creativities, and teachers can make allowances for those instances to occur in a classroom. You're just not going to be strictly rigid on the Common Core. You can do wonderful, exciting, and fun projects. You might hear, I've heard this. Well, it's not a measurable assessment. Well, there are some things in life that are very valuable that you cannot measure. I mean, how do you measure love, enthusiasm, hate? Those are not measurable, but they're very, very important. Do you agree, Chris?
I agree.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think the goal is, we know what the bottom line is, but we want to impact the teachers with more power to get us there, because they're the experts. They're the ones that come in with the new ideas every day, and we don't want to stifle anybody.
No, I just wanted to say that.
Getting to the teachers on a day-to-day basis, is this going to make their ability to work harder than what we're doing right now? Easier?
Actually, it's going to make it easier. Easier. They're going to have so much data that they can pick and choose from, and again, everything could get scanned in and read itself. The initial training is going to take some.
Yeah, okay. That's understood.
Initial training, but once they get onboard, the districts I've worked with have used edoctrine, would not give it up.
Plus, what I'd like to hear, I'm curious to see Dr. Deggan's findings and Dr. Wanko's, because the idea of going from three systems to one system makes it so much easier for the teacher and, you know, and their everyday, that I'm very curious to see, plus the cost savings that's associated with that. You know, if you could save some money and make the teachers' lives a lot easier, it's a beautiful thing. So I'm very curious to see how far we go with this.
All right. Welcome along.
Thank you, Dr. Deggan.
Thank you. We'll also be doing a review of the IT program, the One-to-One Computer Initiative, the BYOD Initiative. Also, professional development of our staff regarding the educational benefits of using technology in the class. And everything is going to be tiered, so you'll be able to sign up for a course at your level, so that you won't feel you're so far behind or so far ahead that you don't have benefit from that particular PD. Also, we'll be checking the infrastructure for PARC readiness and our cloud services enabling the 21st century learning. The next item I have is board goals, and we will be developing those to make sure they're specific with intent, and we will delineate major activities, identify those responsibilities, also the resources, set the timelines, and it will contain indicators of success. So we'll have our benchmarks, and we'll be checking. All right. Also, we'll be conducting a review of hiring and firing. I was hoping to bring in right away AppleTrack, and I just found out today, AppleTrack has been sold to another company. It's an online recruiting tool that gives us control over recruiting, hiring, and onboard process. And Mr. Copaz has done some extensive research over the past few days, and will bring us up to date on that sale.
Who bought a Frontline?
Yes.
Frontline bought it. Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Wanko. Just in conversation before with Trustee Munoz, because I know Hope Oak in Jersey City, I think we all get a call, you all use formerly known as AppleTrack, which is now Frontline Education, which offers a variety of services to school districts, one of them being the AppleTrack, which again was formerly AppleTrack, which is everything online. Candidate would upload all their documents, their certifications, also a very important key, the recommendations would be right there for us to see. And then as Dr. Wanko said, the hiring and firing would put ownership to our directors and our principals, so we could share that with them, have those conversations. They wouldn't have to come to my office to review. Everything would be online, it's paperless. You know, the recommendations and references would be there for us so we could check during the screening process. Frontline is going to be coming in next week, and we'll be seeing if that's a cost-effective process. It does open us up to a pool of candidates. If you go in a paper or anywhere online, you'll see Frontline or AppleTrack link. So if you upload your documents and you're a candidate, you're open to anyone that has Frontline.
Excellent.
So if you go to any school district, many times candidates will not go through sending it in to board to board. Once they're on AppleTrack now, they, you know, can go to any district. So if you were part of that, our pool would grow, especially in those areas where we have problems finding those tough certificates, where we've been dealing with that over the last few years. Another service Frontline has that we've looked into, was formerly known as ASAP. That's the absence management program. As you know, we discuss this all the time, how come you're constantly hiring substitutes? We lose substitutes. We hire. You know, I made a goal this year to continue to hire every substitute to make sure that we have substitute in front of every class when someone is out. But it is a, it's a battle. People take a substitute job to make it a real teaching job, or they get another job, or they go back to college, which is something that, you know, we have a difficult time fulfilling. Some areas where, you know, school districts have gone to, you've heard of the source of teachers, we've been in conversations for Insight. You know, in my discussion with Insight, one of my issues would be, would you take our substitutes and we'd be part of the hiring process? And absolutely, they would manage our absence management for us, but we would be part of the hiring, and any issues that we would have, we'd work hand-in-hand. And that would also be a cost savings to the district. My conversations with Insight, which is, you know, a program that deals with substitutes, they thought they could save our district $200,000 a year in annual savings. So that's something that we will be presenting to you. We'll bring it to personnel, we'll bring it to finance, we'll bring it to the entire board, and let those companies make these presentations to make sure that you're comfortable. And last is Safe Schools. Safe Schools is a program that I know they use in North Bergen. They're going to implement it this year. It's an online training for our staff members, so we have PD days, we have mandatory trainings. Trustee Munoz, again, we were in conversation with this last year. And what's great about Safe Schools is it's free to our district. They have over 300 courses. All we have to do is upload our staff members, and it's free because of our involvement with the school boards and shore school. So when we have those mandatory trainings, if someone is absent, okay, we can make that up. We can give our principals time, whether it be a Victoria Faculty meeting or a PD day. So we'll not be asking our teachers to be doing that on their own time. We do have PD hours available, whether it be a half-day or full-day, but those mandatory trainings are statute by the state, so we have to make sure that every staff member is trained. And again, that's free chalk, so that was the best news that I've ever obtained. So we're looking forward to those, you know, best practices. I'm constantly calling superintendents, assistant superintendents of the districts to make sure that we're making, you know, the right decision and what negative and positive. that we're making, you know, the right decision and what negative and positive things that they have seen dealing with these, you know, free programs.
Dr. Wanko, the AppleTrack, is that a nationwide program?
Yes.
And secondly, the substitute teachers had been stated that they needed to have completed four years of undergraduate study? Is that the, is that so for Bayonne?
Well, you could go to any county office if you have 60 credits, and you can get a sub-substitute with the 60 credits, and that, once it's issued by any county, it's good to the entire state. The companies we're looking at have a higher standard, and again, they will not be our employees, they would be the company's employees, so we're not paying any other benefits, we're just paying a subscription payment to that company for the service.
I think what Mr. Wilbuck's trying to get at is that, I think you said it earlier, that we would have some say, and I know, like, when I was up, you'd say, "Well, this, I know so-and-so's a very good math teacher, and if my math teacher's out, I'd certainly like Ms. Jones to be the math teacher that day."
No, each of these companies allow you to put your subs in first, they're the default group for your district.
President, you are correct, you would be able to prioritize, whether it's a teacher or a principal, what substitutes you've had, and what choices you would have. So, that's my number-one choice, well, that person's going to a different school, or it is number-two. So, they would really take ownership of the substitute process, which, you know, they are the educational leaders of the building, and they know best.
And on the other hand, I think some teachers would be happy to know that they can probably delete so-and-so also, like...
Exactly.
Right.
So, again, flexibility now, if you, you know you're going to have a field trip in October, you could put that in right now, and you already have a sub-assigned, you know it's covered.
And just to revisit Safe Schools, I've actually used the program, I'm really excited it's coming here because not only is it free through New Jersey School Boards, but it's also a very interactive program for our educators. As you know, every educator has to go through a minimum amount of training every year for particular issues, whether it be using AED or, you know, suicide prevention for students, all types of things like that, actually suicides every two years. But the point is, it's a very interactive program, it gives you like modules that you have a certain amount of time to get through, which is very exciting that we're actually bringing to the district, because I've seen what we've used thus far, and it hasn't been as interactive. So, this is actually a pretty good thing. So, thank you, Dr. Wanko and Mr. Copas for getting this ball rolling, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll quickly go through, there will then be a facilities review to determine the status of all buildings. As you know, every district must have a five-year facility plan, I've touched bases with Mr. Smith on this, as well as Mr. Koubert, and I believe we're about three years, we have to, three years behind at this point, so we have to move quickly to make sure we are, you know, all code and regulations are in place, and our infrastructure and priorities and targets are correct. And the last one I have on here is, I would like to initiate procedures to regain accreditation for Bayonne High School in the Middle States Association of Schools and Colleges.
I did not know that we were not accredited.
When did that happen?
As you're in the...
Was it based upon, just for the benefit of the other board members and anybody else who might be listening?
Can't answer for other people.
I know, we, I was on a Middle States Committee years ago, but how do you, how does a school district lose accreditation? How's that happen?
You don't go through the process. There's a process that used to be every 10 years, now it's every seven years. It's a self-evaluation process which helps you grow. As you know, you've been through the process. I've gone through it four times successfully and gotten the schools accredited, but if you don't go through the process, you lose your accreditation. Bayonne was one of the charter members of Middle States, and they are no longer.
So, it doesn't actually mean that we were denied accreditation, it means that we did not, for some reason, we didn't, we didn't go through the process of it.
Correct.
We did pursue it.
In 2014, I believe, was the last year you were accredited.
Because I think we're a pretty good high school.
Absolutely. But remember, branding, branding has a lot to do with helping students get into colleges.
Absolutely.
And to have on your transcript, you know, accredited...
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Dr. Wanko, before we go further, over this course of this year and over the academic year we're coming, is there any new construction ongoing, or is there any planned?
I don't understand.
For new construction?
New construction, we don't have any planned, correct, Mr. Smith?
No, what we're going to do is, we put out a call to the architect, the MR, the school architect, and the long-range facility plan, we will be meeting next week, we will be touring each building to see what needs to be done, what has to be done, and what we can do. At that time, we will hope the architect will put together a monetary plan, and we might have to go out to a bond to do repairs throughout the district. The average age of the buildings within the district is about 85 years old, so the brick and mortar are very worn, and some of the systems are extremely worn down. Case in point, the monies that we expend on our HVAC systems on a yearly basis, and that's almost planned obsolescence by the manufacturers. It's very tough to get parts for an Ad-Dale unit that was put in Midtown Community School back in 1993. Manufacturers find it easier to make a new unit rather than to make parts for an older unit to, to bring up to, to get back in service. So, we're constantly fighting that battle with Dr. Wanko's leadership, we're going to visit each and every building and make sure that the long-range facility plans addresses all the needs of the district and make sure our number-one priority is the safety and well-being of our students and our staff.
When you take the detour, can you please let me know what day?
Detour, I've been taking a lot of detours, but we can take a tour, yeah, absolutely.
Well, we have, we're facilities committee.
Yeah, I'll let you, absolutely. You know, give me a time when you're off, and then we could schedule it around your, I'm here every day, so maybe it's easier to schedule it around your...
We're facilities committee, so that would be great.
So am I.
Yeah, and Austria, actually, Austria, yeah.
And I'm an architect, so that would...
You have your hot hand, right?
Yep.
I'm not an architect.
Mr. Smith, I have one other question on the construction, that if you remember way back, months ago, while we were going through the financial crisis, we took a line item that had over $3 million in it and tried to repurpose that for the budget. Since the state is now coming to its senses and starting to give us some of the money that we deserve, and by statute, we couldn't repurpose it to other general funds. Now, we still have that money, and we'll be able to use that money for projects that were earmarked for safety and other items.
They're all Tier One ROD grants.
Correct.
And Tier One ROD grants were safety-based grants, doors, windows, roofing, security cameras, things of that liking.
And the advantage being that it was a 60%, 40%...
Absolutely.
You know, dividing the state money and our money, and we're able now to reutilize that money for those construction projects.
In fact, just this week, we got approximately $555,000 back from the state for the project where we put the new roof on Lincoln Community School. So, we're waiting for money to come in from Horace Mann, where we did the windows through the ROD grants, and we're also waiting for money to come in from a 2009 project from the high school, where we did some rental repair, and you may remember when the scaffolding was all around that building, we're still chasing that money. And we've been told that we will be receiving that within the next couple of business days.
Thank you.
So, we're very happy about that as well.
Is the Horace Mann project completed?
There are a couple items that need to be done, a punch list, so to speak. Horace Mann was approximately $1.1 million to replace all the windows in the building. We have a couple of punch list items, the majority of the windows were all the same dimensions because of the way the building was constructed, but there are some custom things that need, still need to be done, some screens still need to be put in, we're still holding some of the contractor's money, so once he is complete and we are happy, we'll sign off on it, then we'll get that paperwork down to the state and be reimbursed our 60% share.
So, that's my plan for the first 100 days, we have a few days in already, I am very excited about being back in the Bayonne Educational Committee, and I will turn the meeting back.
Mr. Broderick, just one question, Dr. Wanko, and again, welcome to the district. One of the things that was mentioned with Mr. Deloria is that he has vast experience as a BA in other districts and also in the private sector, and I believe he said he worked for Ernst &amp; Young for, for a number of years. One of the things, as I come from the private sector, one of the things that I have been trying to get through, and we did for a while, along with trustee, Desmond here, is that there are a number of big-ticket items in the budget that really consume a lot of money, and those are really under the umbrella of the insurance area, whether it's health benefits, whether it's prescription benefits, whether it's workers' comp, whether it's liability, whatever. Those premiums are tremendous every year, and for a while, we had, as we had the private sector, a risk manager to focus completely on that category of expenses to help reduce the premiums that we pay, reduce the incidence of people getting hurt, and controlling where people go and not frivolously utilize the health benefits. And I would ask you to look at that area, and perhaps that's something we ought to revisit in the future. I know you've got a lot of things on your plate, but that's certainly one thing that pays back an awful lot. As you may have read in the newspaper, we just saved anywhere from $400,000 to $1,500,500 just in the prescription getting together, being a little creative, being a little innovative, and I think there's money to be made in that area when you have a focus on it. Thank you.
Dr. Maye?
At this time, we're going to adjourn to a closed session for legal personnel negotiation items. It is 7:36, the board will return in the auditorium.